Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you all please remain standing for the invocation, please? Thank you, God, for bringing us here safely tonight. Please give us the guidance and the wisdom to make the right decisions for our community. In this we pray, amen. May we have a roll call, please?
Present.
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 Present. Item number five, these are communications from the staff.
Yes, Mayor, and City Council, I was really happy to tell you, I've been telling you and telling you I was going to have a volunteer program. And I finally got that completed, and we've got three members here to show you, so you can put a face to a name, and we've already put them to work, they've already done a couple of court runs for us, they're already doing the, putting out our radar trailer on a regular basis for us, and we have many other things for them to help us out. So it's with great pleasure that I want to introduce our program here. It's called the VIN Program, Volunteers in Newman. And I have, our leader here is Don Hockett, you've seen him, he's also our sign maker for some of our parks. And we have Walt and Judy Fordall. So I just wanted to give an opportunity to kind of introduce them, not only to you, but also the community through, via the TV screen here. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer those for you.
Are there any questions for the chief?
And I must say, too, this is a volunteer program, it hasn't cost us anything, so it's, it's great. And I can tell you they're saving us nothing but tons of money.
Chief, I just want to thank you very much for getting this program in operation. I want to thank our volunteers very much for serving our community, and everybody here in the audience will be seeing them in the community in the future. But thank you very much.
Great. And we also had them, if you noticed them or not, but they were out at the Newman Fun Run, and they got their first taste out of the event here, and they kind of got an idea what law enforcement is all about. They also went through, what, the ten weeks of training through the Citizens Academy that was put on through the Sheriff's Office. So they have a little bit of background and a little bit of knowledge now, and we'll put them to full use here. Thank you.
Chief, one quick question on our vehicle. Have we gotten that situation taken care of as far as, is that going to come back to us for an actual vehicle? Do we have that taken care of?
A vehicle for this program?
Right.
Well, I have a vehicle that I'm looking at, the one that I originally looked at for this program, a 93 vehicle, I'm looking at using for a dare vehicle.
Okay.
And I'm looking at a 94 vehicle, because I was able to cut some other deals to keep the cost of the program down, and, but we'll do that. If there's nothing else, I'll give my card to you guys.
Well, if the council wouldn't mind, maybe we could have the chief bring back something, that way we can make sure that they have the tools necessary to make this a successful program. Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello. We've had 500 useful, beautiful travel mugs delivered to City Hall courtesy of Stanislaus County. It's their way of providing an incentive for the residents of Newman to answer a very small survey on their recycling oil program. We have 500 mugs, 500 surveys, we ask all the citizens of Newman if they come into City Hall whether they pay their bill or for any other reason. They fill out the short survey, their prize will be this very nice mug. Council members have a mug and a survey, so please feel free to participate, and we encourage anyone who's interested, come down and see us, we'd like to get rid of them.
Are there any other communications from our staff? Okay. Seeing none. Item number six, these are items from the public, these are non-agenda items. While the City Council welcomes and encourages participation in the meetings, it would be appreciated if you would limit your comments to three minutes so that everyone may be heard. Matters under the jurisdiction of the council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public at this time. However, California law prohibits the council from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the City Council. Are there any non-agenda items? Okay. These are items from the public, these are agenda items. Any member of the audience desiring to address the council on a matter on the agenda, please raise your hand or step to the podium. At the time the item is announced by the mayor. In order that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak, any person addressing the council will be limited to a maximum of three minutes unless the mayor and the council grants a longer period of time. Are there any agenda item questions? Okay. Item number seven, this is a public hearing, this is a resolution number 99, next to number, resolution declaring the existence of a public nuisance under ordinance number 95-4. You have the list in front of you. Ernie, did you want to address this?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. This is a code enforcement issue. You have a list before you and a memo I handed out prior to the beginning of the meeting of properties that have failed to the notice to abate letter to comply with it. They're presently in violation of the property maintenance ordinance. My recommendation to the City Council is to declare the properties a public nuisance, and authorization for abatement procedures is specified in ordinance number 95-4. All property owners have been notified and advised of their right to protest proposed action at tonight's public hearing.
Okay. Being that this is a public hearing, I will now open the public hearing and ask if there are any questions or comments from the audience. Seeing no questions or comments, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to council for questions and direction. Are there any questions for the Public Works Director? Ernie, I just have one question, actually, before we move forward on this, is at some point after we adopt this, are we going to start sending letters out to, in the industrial area?
Um, we have-
I noticed one, if I'm not mistaken on here.
Yes, there is one on the list. We have sent others.
Okay.
Others were from, I believe, the last council meeting, and they are scheduling for those properties to be abated.
Okay, right.
And we will have another list before you for the meeting of the 25th, is it, I believe?
Yeah, because as we start getting going on the Inyo Railroad crossing, and we get that entryway signed into the industrial area, I'd like to make sure that we start getting that area looking nice before we-
Right, we're not going to let up on these, we just have to re-bring them to you as they come up.
Okay. That's all I have. Are there any other questions before we have some direction? None? Can we have some direction?
I move adoption of this resolution per staff recommendation.
A second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Item number eight, this is a consent calendar. Item A, approval warrants. Item B, approval minutes of the April 27th meeting, April 27th special, or, and April 29th special meeting. Resolution approving authorizing Cleve Morris to enter into agreement with Westside Village Apartments signing option to purchase senior housing property. Item D is a resolution, next to number, approval authorizing a general fund administrative surcharge for non-general fund costs. Item E is to authorize the city manager and police chief to sign school resource officer grant. And item F is a resolution number 99, next to number, adopting a resolution setting a tax-related appropriation limit in compliance with Proposition 4 for fiscal 99-2000. If there are any items that you wish to have pulled? If not, can we have some direction on the consent calendar?
I so move approval of consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Item nine, A, this is regular business. This is to receive and file a report regarding Tataric Manufacturing, Cleve.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to go through this report in somewhat of detail, more than I would normally, because I'm assuming that many of the people that are here tonight are here for this issue, and I thank you for coming tonight. At the council meeting on April 13th, council requested that staff bring back a report on the progress towards what is happening out of the Tataric plant. Since that time, staff has spoken with several agencies, the Unified Air Police and Control District, the Regional Water Quality Control Board, Stanislaus County, as well as the owners of the business, to find out what is going on, what progress, if any, is being made towards cleaning up the problem and eliminating the odors. Last week, the mayor and myself, representatives from Stanislaus County, and the owners, met here in Newman to discuss the problem and find out what is going on. They gave us a verbal report and would be following up with a written report that they are required to send to the Regional Water Quality Control Board. This report that I will be giving tonight is based on their verbal report that they gave me, because they have not gotten the written report to me yet. And I'll try to explain this as well as I can. If you have questions, the Public Works Director is also here who can help with some of the explanation as far as the things that they are doing out there. The production cycle for Tataric manufacturing has ended for this year. They are no longer producing their product that they do for this year. They have stopped that because of the end of the season. The activity which is currently going on out there is continued removal of the solids which are in the ponds out at the site. This has been going on for at least the last month, and it is continuing. Their current expectation is that that will be completed in pond number two by the end of this month. And we are going to constantly check up on them to make sure that that is followed through with and is done. The reason for the severe odor problem, I think, is, from what I've heard, has been more severe over the last month, is due to the fact that they are cleaning up the solids out of these ponds, and that is what has been causing the odor problem. Staff stressed to the owners at that meeting that we were very frustrated and very upset that during this process, staff has not been kept informed why and what is going on out there, what is going on at the plant. When we met with them approximately a month ago, we stressed to them that if they would, especially when they started cleaning up the ponds, which we were clear was going to increase the odor problem, if they would let us know so that we could communicate to the citizens, then hopefully we could avoid many of the problems and the complaints and people coming out in droves to complain about them, if they knew that it was working towards cleaning up the problem. So we stressed to them that this cannot continue. If they want to have any success at all in this area, then they need to communicate with us and let us know what is going on out of the plant. It's clear at this point, and we're pretty much to the agreement of everyone, that the way to eliminate the odor problem is to eliminate the solids. The solids that are being deposited in the ponds are fermenting and causing the odor This is what, the conclusion they have come to, they've talked to the Regional Water Quality Control Board about this, and they have plans in place now to remove all of the solids prior to their effluent being pumped out to the ponds. They are currently in the process of finalizing a million and a half to a million and three quarters dollar upgrade to eliminate the odor problem. In essence, they will be installing a mini wastewater treatment plant that will be enclosed, which will remove the solids from their processing. There are two stages involved with this. The first process is that they will be removing most of the solids prior to their production, and then prior to the effluent being discharged out of the plant, it will go through another process, which are called digesters, which are designed to, again, remove any remaining solids that are left in that before it is sent out to the ponds. The solids will be removed prior to water being discharged into the ponds, which, if successful, will eliminate the source of the odor. These changes will be made prior to the start of next production season, which is scheduled for sometime in September, depending on the grape season. Tataric has now been told by the Air Quality Board, the Regional Water Quality Control Board, Stanislaus County, and the city that the severe odor problem will not be allowed to continue for another season. Staff has requested that Tataric provide progress reports every two weeks until the final installation of the new equipment and the removal of the solids from the pond is complete. In addition, staff has requested that Tataric consider improvements to the grounds of the plant to eliminate the overgrowth of weeds and cleanup in general of the surrounding area. We also stressed our concern with the spreading of the waste from the plant on agricultural lands near our community and out near the wastewater treatment plant. The waste from the plant is very high in salinity. The city is currently completing a salinity study at our wastewater treatment plant. If this study shows an increase in salinity in the groundwater, the city could be required to do additional processing. This will be an additional cost to the city, therefore the city is very concerned with any other factors which may impact the salinity study in the groundwater. The city will continue to monitor the progress of Tataric and work with both the state boards who have enforcement control over the plant. As mentioned above, the city will continue to do whatever is necessary to ensure the odor problem does not continue in the coming production season. As mentioned before, we have received assurances from the county, from the Air Resources Board and the Regional Water Quality Control Board, that they will not be allowed to start production again until all of these processes are in place to clean up their effluent prior to it being pumped out into the pond. This is not a guaranteed situation. I'm not going to promise anybody anything. This is a process that has not been done before in the United States. It's not been done before anywhere. It's a new process, and therefore, nobody has the sure answer to go say, "It's working over here, so we can bring it over here and do it." And that's why the problem has persisted as long as it has. We feel confident that if this is successful in removing all of the solids from their processing, then this process will clean up the problem. With that, I'm willing to take any questions from the council and the public this time.
First, are there any questions from the council to the city manager?
Cleve, is pond two the last pond that has the solids in? Is there another pond besides that?
Pond three has some solids in, but they're very minor, and they don't, do not anticipate that they're a source at all of the odor. They actually have five ponds. Pond number one has been eliminated. It was a problem, and it's been completely, all the solids removed and actually closed up. It no longer exists. Pond number two is the one they are cleaning out now. Pond number three has some solids, but very little. Ponds four and five have hardly any. They've been able to clean the water up prior to sending it out to ponds four and five.
Cleve, am I to understand that they're just now starting the process of cleaning the ponds out, where they were supposed to have been doing it for some time?
No, they have been cleaning at least for the last, I would say, the last month.
Were they supposed to have been cleaning that up prior to that?
Well, they were working on different solutions. The problem that they are having is finding an actual way to remove the solids from the ponds. And they've tried, they have been working on it, but not very steadily. The problem they have is that they, what they're trying to do is remove the solids without ruining the ponds. As you know, these ponds have two liners in them to prevent the water from seeping down into the ground, because that's, they don't want that, they're not allowed to do that. Those ponds have to be inspected and have to remain intact. So the problem is being able to scoop the stuff out without ruining the liners. And that's what they've been going through, I guess, over the winter, trying to find a way to do that without hopefully ruining the pond so that they are still usable.
Okay, thank you.
Cleve, I had a question. Have they done any testing to know how successful they might be as far as, once they have eliminated the solids?
They, one thing that they have done is, they do have, they have one of these filters that they will be putting in place that they did get in production this year, towards the end of the year. And it was removing most of, most of the solids, almost all. In fact, they said that all that was remaining is what would be called suspended solids, which are, basically, you can hardly see them in the water. And that's what will be put into these digesters that will be the remaining amount to be cleaned up.
I was just wondering, on a small scale, they should have been able to try this experimentally?
They were able to do it with the filters, however, they didn't have the digesters in place.
Okay. Judge Shula?
I have a couple of questions. Where are the solids being hauled to?
Well, as I mentioned in my report, at one time, we discovered, a couple of weeks ago, that they were actually being spread on agricultural land just to the east of our city, between here and the Tataric plant. As soon as we discovered that, we reported it, and that was eliminated immediately. They are no longer doing that. They are disposing of them, as I understand now, they're going to landfills and elsewhere, as far away from here as they can get.
My other question, if most of the solids are done away with before they go into the ponds, what will be left in the pond? Will it be fairly clean water?
Fairly clean water.
But high in salinity?
It is very high in salinity still, yes.
So that's the reason we wouldn't want it to be, to go anywhere but in those ponds?
Correct.
And then, what is the process to evaporate that water?
Yeah, they're actually trying a new process, and Ernie and Charles helped me out with a number, how many gallons per minute did they say they were going to be able to evaporate? Was it?
Two hundred and forty.
Two hundred and forty gallons per minute, hopefully, when they, we're kind of surprised that they could do it at that high of a rate, but they have some sort of evaporators that they're bringing in to actually evaporate the water out of the ponds.
Have they come up with some sort of a landscaping plan, some way that they're going to clean up that property?
No, they have not. We requested that and said, asked them to look at that, and we're going to put some more pressure on the county to try to get the county to ask them to do that.
I guess my next question would be for our attorney. What leverage do we have as a city to say, "No more"?
Frankly, not a whole lot. Cleve said the state agencies are really the main hammers on them, and then the county and then us after that.
Thank you.
We basically help buttress any case, I'd say case, but any action they might have.
Well, one of the things, just to add to it a little bit, one of the things that I know the county made clear at this particular meeting was in line with what Cleve said, was with regards to their season starting up next year, that they just wouldn't allow it to start up again unless they ran this process through before the season started and everything checked out fine. That's, you know, pretty much where the county was coming from. But as Cleve said, they're saying thirty days that it should take before they eliminate the solids out of pond number two, so.
Have the odor problem for a while yet, then?
Probably until the end of May, there may be some. They don't think it's going to be as bad, because they're saying that what happens is these solids actually go through a fermentation process, and once they're done fermenting, the odor is supposedly gone. But it takes them a while to go through that process, and it just depends on how far along this particular pond has gone through that.
Are they cleaning these out at night, or just during the day, or?
I'm not sure. I've seen them, I know they are during the day, I've seen them out there, but-
Yeah, I can see that, but, for instance, I think last Saturday night, there was a strong odor coming from there. And, you know, was it just leftover from the day, or, you know, is it something that-
That's, that's something that's really strange that we've, as everyone that's been here knows, it's very strange that quite often, it will come in, last for twenty or thirty minutes, as short as that, very strong smell, and be gone. And that's one of the problems we've had also, and as the citizens know, they've had, in calling the Air Resources Board, by the time they get out here, there's no odor. And so that's, that's a problem we've had, and that's, we haven't been able to pinpoint exactly what is causing that. There's been several times when we've had that odor come into town, that we've gone out to the plant and tried to question them and find out, you know, what are they doing differently? We have our wastewater treatment operator, plant operator across the street, who has also tried to observe and find out, you know, anything that they're doing differently that might cause that odor at any given time. To this point, we have not been able to discover what is causing that.
I have a quick question. If the, if once they get it cleaned up and they have this new process in place during their next season, if the odors continue to come, what recourse will we have? I mean, will they shut them down if we report orders, odors coming again, or?
Well, that's what the Regional Water Quality Control Board and the Air Resources Board has told us they will do. They said that, and we've stressed to them, and they've said the same thing, that they won't allow it to go on for another year. The question that really becomes out, and this was asked of, the owner asked the Air Resources Board at one time a couple of weeks ago, is what level of tolerance is acceptable? The Air Resources Board told them zero. If there's odors outside the plant, then, or outside their property, then that's unacceptable. So our main force, and I can pose this question to the city attorney also, would, number one, would be to report the odors and put pressure on all three, the county, the Air Resources Board, as well as the Regional Water Quality Control Board, to do something if the odors continue. I suppose that we could consider legal action also. I'm not sure, you know, where we file that or how we do it, but I suppose that legal action in terms of a lawsuit would be an option, so.
Yeah, but I think what you said prior to that probably makes more sense. We're more of a fact-finding, fact-gatherer for those agencies to help them with any action they take.
Okay. Before I open it up to the public, one of the things that I would like to ask the city manager to put together with council concurrence is, basically, to put a letter together post-dated June 1st, that basically outlines the concerns that we've had, the meetings that we've had. Also to attach, to include for attachments, all the fines that Tataric has received from the Fish and Wildlife and Air Resources and whoever else is finding them out there. And to put the attachments together, and like I said, make sure it's post-dated to June 1st. That way, we, if this thirty-day deadline that they're talking about doesn't happen, that way we can immediately send this information out to the Air Resources Board. The council would agree with that.
I agree.
Has the Air Resources Board considered, you know, part of the problem is by the time they get here, the odor is dissipated. Have they considered stationing someone out here, put them in a little trailer somewhere out here, and, you know, so they're here?
I can answer that, whether they've considered that or not. I know that at one point, I was told that they, they gave me a phone number, which was a cell phone number, that supposedly we could call at any time and request someone to come out. But again, they're coming from Modesto, Merced, Oakdale area, whatever, by the time they get here, many times the odor is gone.
Can they deputize someone at the city to be the, I'd like to offer my backyard with a tent set up for somebody if they'd like to come and stay, because we get the odor pretty good out there.
Cleve, is it an accurate statement that if they don't actually smell the odor, the odor doesn't exist?
That's what I've been told, is that they have to smell it and witness that, yeah, there is actually a problem. I have, I do understand probably that they don't take as much credibility to the verbal complaints as they do written complaints. If people want to have a bigger impact, the process would be to actually record dates and times, how long things lasted, and send letters to the Air Resources Board. Okay? But you'll do the letter, right? Yeah. On the attachments. At this time, I'm going to ask the residents who have questions or comments for us, if you could come up to the podium and ask, go ahead and ask your questions and comments. And if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, my name is Michael Ross, and I live at 1259 Duck Blind Circle. I guess I'm a little frustrated, I'm sure a lot of people are frustrated with this issue. It was only a few weeks ago that I got to the point where I called the mayor and brought the issue as to what exactly the city council was doing to approach this issue. And the impression I got was that this body was basically gathering information and not particularly taking leadership on it. And I still get that impression tonight. I'm very gratified to hear some updates. It sounds like we've got some good information, sounds like we've got perhaps a good plan. But I'm still concerned that our stance here at the city is one of wait and see, one of finding out what they plan on doing, whether that they be the county, or the Tataric plant itself, or other governmental bodies. And I guess what I would like to see is that this body in some way draw up a time scale, some sort of, some sort of a list that says if certain things aren't done by a certain time, then this body will take certain action. I'm not sure that, I've heard things tonight to the extent that we don't have a whole lot of legal recourse. Well, I don't think that's true. I think just about any city in the state of California would feel free to sue a company that is ruining the quality of life of its citizens, and that's exactly what's going on. So basically, I'd like to see two things. One is that this body begin taking leadership, and secondly, and coming right out of that, that the citizens of Newman be given information as to what that leadership, what that plan is going to be. And that plan, of course, would include repercussions to Tataric, again, by date, by month, however you want to do it. But I just don't want to be here a year from now saying, "Well, we tried all these things, and now we're not sure what we're going to do." Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Don Smith. I live at eight oh seven Sweet Gum Lane in Newman. And I'm really concerned with the lack of action on it, too. I've called both the EPA and the Air Resources Board, all those people, every time we have an attack. If everybody would do that, everybody in this town would do that, they would get enough responses, they can cite them. And also, I talked to the woman in, at the Air Resources Board or whatever it is in Merced. She made it here one night in about twenty-nine minutes, she said, and she smelled it and she went to the people who complained and they smelled it altogether and they cited them for it. And also, they've been cited for illegal dumping by the EPA and everything else. These people are not good neighbors. You can't let somebody come in here and, like the other gentleman said, ruin our quality of life. I know a neighbor of mine threatened to sell his house and move out because of it. Now, something's gotta be done. You can't ask them if they're gonna do something about it. You have to tell them and you have to tell them when they're gonna do it. If you guys can't do it, then go to somebody who can. There's gotta be some way to either shut them down or make them comply. You cannot ask them what they're gonna do, 'cause they're gonna lie to you like they've been doing before, all this time. Now, like when I talked to the woman in Merced, she said, "The tolerance level is up to here. Nobody cares anymore if they can comply. They want it stopped or they want them shut down." And I think that's the way it should be.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Carol Robertson and I live at thirteen thirty-four Red Tail Drive. And I'm really concerned. I don't know about the other people in this room, but I've had to do a lot of homework that I don't wanna spend my time doing. And I feel like all of you people there should be way ahead of what I know. And I, I'm tired of dealing with the county and the city of Newman and all of that. We're talking to the federal EPA now and I'd like to give you all a phone number from federal EPA, US EPA. It's four one five, seven four four, one two two nine. The gentleman's name is Mark Sims. He's the only, he contacted me. I didn't contact him. He contacted me because of a letter that I wrote to Gary Condon that he referred over to the federal EPA. He's the only person I've talked to so far involved in any of this who read to me an ordinance that covers us all basically, saying that, I don't know what's the proper wordage, but it basically meant that no business has a right to come in and be a public nuisance to other residents and businesses. And tonight, when I heard that you were going over public nuisance ordinances, I really thought that's what you came out of your last meeting with. I'm thinking, "Oh, right, you know, they're gonna get in there and they're gonna stop this because this has been a public nuisance to all of us since this opened. And that's what should be happening here." We, you know, we just shouldn't have to be doing this. There's a few other, every department I've talked to, and I've talked to all these, Air Pollution, Quality Water Board, all these people, many, many times, I have a whole folder. I've had a personal letter from the Tartaric companies themselves wanting to be good neighbors. Yeah, that was nice. I liked the fact that they hired a PR person to go to work from that sweet gal. You know, she's very articulate and I'm sure all of you probably talked to her. But what really upset me is when I called in complaints to Air Quality Board and to Paul Caruso's office and different departments. You know who answered those complaints at first? Danielle, from, from the plant. And I just told her, I said, "No, this isn't gonna cut it." I said, "They're very lucky to have you, but if I wanna talk to you, I'll call you because they're gonna tell us what they want us to hear." And so then I started getting calls from all those people directly. But, you know, they're right. Calls don't cut it. We need letters. We all need to be writing letters to the federal EPA. It needs to go over the heads of everybody because this is, it's gotta stop. And I think that we, I think there is a potential here to get help from the city in a lawsuit. I was told by Planning Commission once when I talked to them, 'cause I, I called and I had their use permit faxed to us. I have a lot of questions about that use permit. I wanna go there when I want permits for my business. The protection that we got for ourselves when this use permit was granted, for an operation that absolutely no one knew anything about. This whole complete permit process was granted on total ignorance from every department. 'Cause there is not another plant of this nature in the United States. The only other one that's even similar is in Italy. And when I asked the Planning Commission, "Did anybody go to Italy to smell it before they approved this one?", they said, "Actually, yes. Someone went there on vacation, but they got sick and couldn't go." So their only chance for a morsel of information that would've kept them from anything but ignorance, they didn't get that opportunity because they left there. I don't know how a whole plant goes in and gets a permit to make a process. There was no environmental report down on this. There was only three things from this city, three restrictions put in the use permit from the city of Newman. And the first one, I really wanna understand better because I'm ignorant myself as to what it means. And that is that the first thing that you asked for when this plant was going in was to be sure that it was annexed in writing to the city of Newman. And can somebody maybe fill me in on just what does that mean? What, I'm trying to find out what's the driving factor for really wanting this company here in the first place? And what does it mean to be annexed into the city since it's in our sphere of influence rather than in the city proper itself?
Well, to be annexed would be that it would be within our city limits and we would provide all the services to that, to that plant. I haven't seen that provision.
Do you all see it?
Sure. I wasn't aware of that one. I believe what it means is at such time as it becomes close, that we begin annexing out in that area, that it would be annexed into the city because it is in our sphere, so. That's fine. Thank you.
You're welcome. Does it also, being annexed, have anything to do with tax dollars coming into the city?
Very little for an industrial park because of our property share, tax sharing agreement with the county. Any new annexations, we get very little property tax from. The only advantage would be something in the area of the jobs, but we have the jobs with them outside the city. Sales tax, but there's no sales tax on their product that they have, so.
So what would be the reason to want it to be here so badly?
I wasn't here when that statement was made, so I couldn't tell you for sure.
You know, that's interesting.
Other than, maybe Bob Navoe has that answer, but the, the big thing is that we have a sphere, a sphere of influence of where we plan to grow to. And if they're in our sphere as we grow, they should be within our sphere, within our city limits. Not to leave a hole out there of some area, an island that we're not serving, so.
You'll all be curious to know, too, that the part about landscaping to this company was crossed out on the use permit. So they're not required to landscape at all. So our road approaching our fine city gets to go by, you know, anybody visiting gets to go by this, excuse my expression, pig trough, 'cause that's, to me, that's what it looks like when it's wet and the muck is going everywhere and it's sticking all over our roads and that we have to pay to replace when they get bad.
Did they mention, did they mention to you, who crossed that out?
I don't know. It's on there. It's crossed out. No, I didn't ask. But it is crossed out. If you wanna look at it, it's right there. And I don't know what constitutes also having an environmental report. Why, you know, I'm not sure. I thought almost any business going in had to do that, especially if it was a newly created type, type city. I can't understand. And when I asked the Planning Commission how this permit possibly happened, when it was based on total ignorance, his answer was, "Well, you know, the council wanted it to go through." And I'm not talking about the city of Newman. I'm talking about San Jose County. Everybody wanted it to go through, so it went through. I'm thinking, "You know what? That's just not good enough. That's not good enough." And then I said, "Well, how do we shut it down?" He said, "That's a civil matter now." That, and basically what that means to me, when somebody says it's a civil matter, that means that there may have to be a lawsuit. I think over two years is way longer than any business has the right to do what they've done to this city. I just wanna say that in my business, we have a lot of people from outside of Newman who come here. And some of them have been coming to our park for a long, long time. And I had a, I had a police officer from San Jose come in. He stays there quite often. He came into my, my little store that we have out there and he threw a two dollar bill on my counter and he says, "Here's what I'd give you for the city of Newman the way it stinks now." You know, and I get comments like this every single day. So even people in this city who think that their property values are not affected, they're so wrong. This whole city is being affected. I've had people tell me, you know, they just don't know if they'll continue to stay out there because the smell is just pathetic. I had one camper who drove through it when the muck was all over the street and he couldn't get that smell out of his car for a week. He was going to buy and purchase a home in Newman. He, he's in gusting. You know, it's just daily that I hear these kinda comments and it's had an impact on my business. Not only an impact on our home, you know. We can no longer enjoy anything in our yard and I'm sure many of you are going through the same thing. So I guess the question here is, you know, one of the words that you guys said was severe odor. That they, all this was to eliminate a severe odor. One of the things that I've heard every place I call, and this really bothers me, is that when they're done with all this, there, that there, there was always a promise that there would be some odor. That it might not be this bad, but there would be an odor because this is the type of plant it is. I don't think we should have to deal with any odor. Not any odor. Not just some odor. Because then what you know is gonna happen in the fall when this comes about is gonna be, what degree of odor is okay? And I believe that if this use permit isn't changed or we don't get some more restrictions or something in there, that we're gonna have to go through this process all over again. But I know these promises are being made. I've heard them all. I have letters with them telling me the same thing that you learned at this meeting. I had a letter a month ago from this Tartaric plant telling me all this stuff. I, I've had four different timed things on when they were supposed to have those ponds emptied. You know, and I hope it'll happen, but the problem is, what do we have to protect us in case this doesn't happen? And I don't personally know how we're still selling property in this, in this city. We probably don't need to delve in a lot to what the disclosure laws are, but I'm surprised, to be really honest, there hasn't been lawsuits already in that, in that respect. So, anyway, I, Mr. Sims at the federal EPA was very interested in what's going on. He would be, he is going to be doing lots of checking into it, he promised me. He would've been here tonight except that he was already booked somewhere else. But, you know, I just think that if we're gonna get anything done, we're gonna have to start dealing at a bigger level. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make sure you get this back. One of the things the city attorney just mentioned to me, we might want to look at in the future, or quickly here, is since the county did issue the permit, that possibly one course of action, if this company isn't in compliance after the thirty days, is to schedule it to be on the agenda for the county and they review their permit. That's, that would be the course of action, just as far as.
Yeah, I just, that'd be, we can always file a public nuisance suit, but to get something going fast, I'd say that'd be the thing that would get the quickest action.
My name is Felisa Ponce Deliana. I live at eleven eighty-eight Canvas Back Court. And I agree with you. It's very difficult for me to understand how they're selling property out there, except they're not disclosing. Forecast Homes is not disclosing. I reported them to the Board of Realtors and have been working on that end. I've talked to the guy at the federal EPA also because I've got the same response. I email, I write, and I call. And I am appalled that the city council doesn't seem to understand or have as much knowledge as those of us that are in the community have. I've only been in town for six months. I grew up here and now, come back. And I'm appalled by what's going on out there and that no one in the city within power seems to understand what's going on out there. And I have been told the same thing that you've been told, Mr. Morris, over and over and over for the last six months by Danielle Davis. The filters didn't work. The, interestingly enough, Air Resources Board says that they've got two feet of muck in those ponds and they're supposed to only have two inches. And that it's gonna be over fifteen hundred truckloads to pull that out and that there's no way they're gonna do it before September. And that was told to me by the Air Resources person who actually came to my home about two and a half weeks ago when we had that really bad incident. And I called and that day alone, there was over thirty-five calls. And he actually came to my house that day. And my comment to him was, "Is this the first time you've ever been out there?" And he said, "Yes," that his supervisor would not allow them to station anybody out here to, um, yeah, early in the morning or in the evening and that they're undocumented as long as that board person does not smell them. And they need five documented times before they'll close them down. They have that power, but he said that politics is not gonna let them do it. Not in a million. There's a lot of stuff going on here that we don't know anything about. And as far as, the higher we go, the better off we're gonna be. I've even called Green Peaks because I'm just tired of this. I can't believe that the city council or the mayor said, "I need more information about this. Where have you guys been? This has been two years, two years." I've only been here six months and I'm in contact with all these people? I'm emailing our Assemblymen and our district people and everybody and I, I just, it, it, Newman has always been a great place to live. It's always been a great town. All the people that are buying out Forecast Homes are bare people. They don't know anything about the plant out there and it's not being disclosed. And I think that's a huge problem to Newman. It makes us look bad. It makes, I'm sure Forecast Homes doesn't care. And maybe if we put some pressure on Forecast Homes to have to divulge this information about the plant and it starts hitting them in the pocketbook, then maybe some pressure would be put on that plant to do something. But, and then I read about how they're annexing, wanting to annex more Sherman Ranch out there. The closer you get to the plant, the worse it's gonna be and those people aren't gonna know. They're not gonna know because nobody tells them. So I think that that's a huge problem and I think that we as a community need to address it. And it's one of the ugliest things I've seen in this community since I've been back. Thank you.
I have to make a comment to that. I live over in that area, too, and I get the odors. Actually, I didn't smell them before. About six months ago was when we started smelling them. And one time it was so bad, I had to go back in the house and I barely made it to the restroom. You know, I, I don't wanna say it, you know, 'cause we're on TV, but, you know, it was not pretty. So I understand what the smell is like. And I gotta tell you, I am just as much, you, what you people have said and what the report we've heard from Cleve today is the most that I've heard about it myself. So I, I think it's, I think it's important that we get as much information about this as possible. And I don't understand why they say that it takes five complaints before they'll shut it down, but then they say, "But it's politics." I think that there's a lot of, you know, going back and forth on this and I think a lot of people are saying things that they want other people to hear and what they think they wanna hear, just to, you know, kind of appease them. And I can tell you this, that I'm up here on the city council only for a few months now and I know nothing more than what any of you guys have heard tonight. And I want the smell to go away just as much as you do. I have no, you know, there's no weird stuff going on up here behind the city council. I mean, I don't know what it took to approve the plant or what, you know, I don't know much about politics in general, to be honest with you, but I know I don't like the smell and I want it to go away. So, I mean, I, and everyone here does, too. So it's not that no one is trying to help anybody out or get this issue resolved. So we're doing everything that we can that's within our means to do it, you know. So just please know that, that it's not that we're trying to be, you know, lackadaisical about it and just let it go by. We do not like, you know, hearing complaints from citizens and from myself, my fellow neighbors, 'cause you live right around the corner from me. So just know that, that we're trying to do everything we can to get this issue resolved, okay?
Internet more, eleven thirty-nine Balsam. What I'm concerned about is the health hazards. Has anyone addressed that? I don't know if anyone else has noticed, but if you look at your kids, maybe yourself, with itching, burning eyes, nausea, vomiting. There's a lot of dust from that Titanic. And I've got some material here on the hazards identification. It says caution, "May cause irritation to skin and eyes." And the composition information on ingredients, the ingredient is a hundred percent hazardous. And I know in our house, we've got skin irritations and hives and rashes and we've never had this before. We're living in a cesspool now because that's exactly what it smells like. And even if you don't smell it when you're indoors, even though it comes through the walls, it does affect us. We're out in the fields all the time. That stuff's blowing around and I would like to help. And I would like to help with going step by step on what help you need. I'm sure there are a lot of people in here that would do exactly what you tell them to do, just to get this ball rolling. And I called the, um, Quality Control and I got a call, a call back from a girl named Casey. And what had happened earlier was that they said they really never got any calls recently. I said, "That's impossible." I said, "I know that's impossible, but as long as it's not written, there's really no verification that we did anything." So I just started to put my input in. And if you know why you're getting sore eyes and nasal congestion, that's probably it. Thank you.
Are there any other comments?
I'm Bernadette Cross, I live at 1519 Canyon Creek Drive, way on the other side where you people live. But every once in a while, we get a whiff of what you're talking about. A week ago, I went to Wesley. We passed by that plant. We rolled the windows up quickly, but not quickly enough. And I almost passed out from the odor. And when we let the windows roll down, I became very nauseated. And, and that was for a couple hours. So I sympathize with your, with you people. I'm here to support you. Another thing I'd like to ask the council, do you have a representative to the Stanislaw, uh, meetings when they have it? And, and what is on their agenda to stop things that may come out this way before it gets to this point? Do you have a representative?
We actually used to have a member to the County Planning Commission. We no longer do, we have a, uh, our supervisor appoints, uh, two members of the County Planning Commission. At this time, uh, there's a resident from Patterson and from Series. We no longer have one on the County Planning Commission.
Well, from what I'm hearing by the grapevine, there's a towel plant in Modesto, it's in here. And, uh, a garbage site in Modesto they want. And they're looking around different areas. Since this one is already established and has an odor coming from it. They may just contact Stanislaw County and say, "We want that because you've already established a smell there." I don't know if you're familiar with, uh, Milpitas in the Bay Area. Well, this could be another Milpitas area where nobody wants to go and live, you can't bring industry in it. And when, once people buy in it, it's hard for them to get out of it because nobody wants to buy the property. Do we want this kind of setup for Newman? We're looking for a good community, good industry for our children. So I'm just here to support what's going on. And I'm going to try and get other people to support you also. I know their sympathies are with you all over this, uh, Newman area, so you're not alone.
Thank you, Mrs. Cross.
Hello, my name is Sherry Donaville. I'm new to Newman as of September of 1998. I purchased a home in Forecast Homes because I wanted to move to Newman. At that time, I had my grandchildren here and I wanted a nice, quiet town to live in, someplace that was comfortable and just warm. Um, a few weeks ago, I came home and I was totally devastated. Got home from work, came home, moved into the house, changed clothes. Thought I was going to sit on the porch to just enjoy my evening, Saturday evening. I couldn't even stay outside for a half a second. And I had to come back in. And I have friends that come from out of town here, it is extremely embarrassing. I want to have a barbecue on the holiday of this month, but guess what? I'm afraid, are we going to have that odor? I am terribly afraid to have family here and have to explain what that is and just for them to have to experience that. So I feel that I'm here and that I'm here alone and probably I shouldn't have come. Had I known about it, I would not have purchased my home here. I sold the home in Tracy and bought here because I wanted to out of choice. But I did not know anything about the smell that was here. And I'm, I just feel alone and I feel very devastated that this has happened. And I just kind of wish that I hadn't moved here. So I wanted to say that. I did not give my address, I'm sorry. It's 1274 Duck Blind Circle.
Hello. My name is Chrissy Lopez. My address is 1139 Balsam Drive. I want to say, I don't know if anybody's getting this, but I'm getting bad headaches from right here to right here, like a baseball hit my head. Sorry, I'm like just, I just came from a game. But it's like a baseball hit my head. And then if I tilt my head forward, it's like trobbing, you know, and then my stomach, it feels like someone ripped into my stomach and pulled out my guts. Sorry for being so... But that's how I feel, I'm always sick. And then I still go out there and coach my softball team. But I'm noticing my girls, my softball team girls, out of 11 girls, maybe three are okay. And the rest get sick. They got the headaches, the vomiting. Then we have this really weird fungus rash going on on my teeth. It looked like hives and it covered the girls from head to toe. Some girls were just on their arms and their legs. So we were complaining to the, um, Baseball League, asking them if it's the powder that they're using. Well, it wasn't the powder, but what was happening was these girls would get this, it looked like hives, but it was a really bad rash on their arms, their face, and it looked like they had fungus growing on them, it was really bad. And they looked contagious and each time a girl came, a new girl got it. And it went away. And it took a long time for it to go away. So I don't know, it's that smell is just killing and I think it's that air. I was reading in a medical book and I called Kaiser Permanente. And they said that foul, uh, the odor like that causes those kinds of reactions. So can't you guys give them a ticket for polluting the air? You know, and keep giving them big fines and give, give Newman some money. Keep winding them with some fines or something. But it's really, really bad, so that's why I'm here. Because I want you to know that the children are being affected because I'm coaching and I see lots of kids. They come to practice, their head's hurting, their stomach, or they got that rash. So I just wanted to know that. Thank you.
I just want to mention on the fines, I wish we could have some of those too. I think they've been fined up to about $350,000 so far. Um, we haven't got a penny of it, I'll let you know that. Are there any other comments?
There's your stack, stack right there.
I just want to say, any of you that have any of these medical conditions, and I haven't talked to anyone frankly, that hasn't been suffering headaches or respiratory or nausea, I haven't heard of the hives before, but it makes perfect logic. I really, I know there was a, a high school principal here in town that was rushed to the hospital about a year ago on a day that this was a very, very severe smell. And, um, they, she was told she had a violent allergic reaction to something. And she was sure that she was caught in the pocket of that odor, so I certainly don't doubt her word. I believe every, every morsel of it. But document it if you're having these problems medically. Talk to your doctor and tell him you want it as part of your file. And then call federal EPA and let them know that you're getting sick from this, okay? Thank you.
I have another suggestion. Can you get a doctor or a physician or somebody in to check the plant out? Find out if they're, if this is causing health problems? Because I've had some of those headaches. My kids have had some of the other symptoms they were talking about too. If they're actually making people sick, we're talking about a whole lot of trouble here. And also the property values, if, you know, if you're hurting people's property values or the ability to sell their house, you get another big problem because that's going to be a big lawsuit.
Any other comments? Okay.
You know, something that was recently brought up. I, I spoke with someone that makes deliveries out at the plant. And he said, "We think that the problem is bad on the outside, the plant on the inside is even worse." And I think we need to get somebody involved in, I don't know, public health or something. Because those people that are working there are exposed to it too. So, so we need to have them investigate the inside as well as the outside.
Any other comments from up here? Okay. Uh, let me just say that, um, a couple of things that we're going to take into consideration is what you had said with regards to, uh, public health. And Cleve will be contacting them, uh, immediately. Uh, we will also be looking at putting that, uh, letter with the attachments together, post-dated to the end of the month. Uh, one other thing is the city attorney had mentioned what we'll do is, uh, we'll contact again the, uh, the county and, uh, look at agendizing this on their agenda and to review their, uh, to review their permit. Uh, one of the things, if this plant is able to get their act together, one of the things obviously we want to do is revisit their permit to add some more, uh, language to it, uh, for, for, for this. Uh, let's see, what else? One of the things that we were told at the last meeting was that we will get regular reports. I think it's every two weeks is what we'll do. And what we'll do for the residents here is, uh, as we get the reports, we will keep you maintained, or, uh, we will keep you in constant, uh, contact, uh, through the newspaper. Uh, I'll have the city manager write a, uh, letter to the editor, uh, as we get the reports. That way you are consistently informed of what the situation is. And, um, and we will see what happens with regards to the, uh, to the cleaning of the pond. I do want to, uh, to repeat the number that Carol had mentioned for the federal EPA in case those at home didn't, uh, get it. Uh, the gentleman's name is Mark Sims. The telephone number is area code 415-744-1229. And I would encourage everyone as well to, uh, to, uh, have something in writing as well. That way when we meet with these individuals and we meet with the county, that way we have some, uh, actual letters from our residents. Uh, I wouldn't also discourage you from, uh, if, uh, if you would like to, uh... Okay. Yeah, well, one, one quick thing that the city attorney had mentioned is we could have a, uh, a file at the city of Newman to, uh, start the public nuisance process as well. Uh, I wouldn't discourage you from, I know Carol and I know Tom Applegate have given their numbers out to the residents here in town to contact them, to, uh, to, uh, file a petition. Uh, if you, you're more than welcome to go down that road as well. But I will give you, uh, the council's word that, that we will keep you informed. Uh, we will, uh, keep you regularly informed as we are informed. And, you know, I live on that side of town as well. And, you know, I have two little nephews and, you know, I don't like to see them smelling that and I sure don't either. And, uh, as, as Cleve had mentioned initially, we're not going to allow this to go on for another season. And, and I give you the council's word on that. And, uh, we will do everything that we can. I hope you don't think that we, uh, aren't concerned about it because we are very concerned about it. We, uh, we don't want to see the quality of life in Newman not get better. We don't want to see a situation here where businesses don't want to come into town and bring jobs here. We don't want to see a situation where residents such as yourself who just move into town decide that they no longer want to live here because that just gives everybody a black eye. And, uh, and it's not good for our community. And, uh, we will certainly do everything that we can to make sure that this problem is corrected. And, uh, but it will start with communication with you on a regular basis. And if we need to, then we will have, uh, uh, regular, uh, we will have this regularly on the agenda as we are informed. That way you are informed and that way the citizens at home are informed. But if you have, uh, any further questions, the number at City Hall is 862-3725. For the residents at home as well, if they have any, uh, questions or concerns, please feel free to call our staff at any time and Cleve will be more than happy to answer the questions. And, uh, and we just, we just want to emphasize that, that we have every intention of keeping you informed. We want to have a good quality of life here as well. But if there are no other questions, uh, if there are no other questions from the council, go ahead, Jim. The Regional Water Quality Control Board, I have asked Cleve to, uh, post-date a letter for, uh, June 1st, uh, request with, with attachments of the different fines that, that have been levied against Tataric. Uh, requesting, I believe, a cease and desist if we can possibly do that. Uh, and, and have in chronological order all the fines that have been levied to them. But we will post-date a letter, uh, and, uh, I will sign it and we will go from there as far as that. But as I've said, we will keep the residents informed regularly, uh, through letters to the local paper and, and let them know what's, what's going on. And as I've said, the number is 862-3725 at City Hall if you, uh, would like to have further questions answered. Yes, ma'am? Okay, the question was, what is the season on when they begin and when they end directly? It's approximately September when their season begins. And it begins slow as the, the grape, the season starts. Um, and it ends approximately in around March, the end of March usually. It just depends on the season, it can be a little earlier, a little later, but that's generally their season. Go ahead, Carol. Yeah, okay. Ernie, do you want to tell, I think you know what that is, he's...
What they're using for odor control is sodium hypochlorite. And that's basically what we use on our water wells. It's just, uh, bleach, chlorine for disinfectant, but it also helps with the odors. But not much on their account.
Question I have is, and I'm sure that Supervisor Caruso has been involved in this process.
He, he was at the meeting the other day that we had.
Is it possible to get him out here to our community to listen to our concerns?
I'm sure he would do that.
Could we have him on the next agenda if possible or...
If you would like to.
Or a future agenda?
Okay. What we could do is, as, uh, Councilmember Radford had asked, is, uh, to, at the, at our next regular meeting, we'll schedule, uh, this, uh, again, just to give a further update. And we will try to have our supervisor out here to listen to the concerns and comments that, that our residents here, uh, have for him.
You know, something that Mrs. Cross mentioned, and I read the article in the paper too, is that considering, um, garbage dump or, um, a prison or a towel works here. And I think we need to bring that up too. We need to get clarification, what, what exactly are they talking about here?
I, I can, I can briefly tell you what that is. The county has just gone through the process of, of purchasing additional property next to the Fink Road landfill. And somebody, I believe it was one of the supervisors, mentioned the possibility of moving the towel plant. Um, the purpose, it has not been stated yet, but many people feel that their purpose in purchasing, uh, that property is number one, to be able to expand the landfill that is already there next to the burn plant. And then that thing, it was also mentioned by someone that possibly the towel plant could be moved out there. So that's where that information has come from, the towel plant that is in Modesto, so...
Real quick, uh, question, real quick follow-up on that. Does the city, if this was to be in the city of Newman, uh, was this cross landing? Will we have any say so in that, as a council body? Will we have any say in whether or not that comes in?
Normally, anything of that magnitude, the county is required to, um, notify all the jurisdictions, uh, through the planning process when something like that happens. And so we, we would get notified. We also do receive copies of the County Planning Commission agendas and of the Board of Supervisors' agendas, which we monitor, um, to, to see if there are things which affect the city of Newman, so... One of the things that we can urge our supervisors to make sure that we do have representatives...
One of the things that we can urge our supervisors to make sure that we do have representation on the county planning commission. As I mentioned, we have representation. We no longer do on the county planning commission. But that's another thing that we could urge our supervisor, is when he appoints representatives to the county planning commission to make sure that Newman is always represented on that body.
One other thing too, to take Sheila's suggestion of having Paul Caruso over here one step further, is possibly get the air quality control people and anyone else that's involved in this at the same time. So that people can express their thoughts to them. Because just talking to Paul's not going to do that much good, I don't think.
What we could also do is, as I've mentioned, we could schedule this for the next agenda. And we recently, about a couple of months ago, we had a, wasn't so much a town hall meeting, but we basically opened up our theater when we were talking about the dam project up in the hills there. And what we could, Councilmember Reed had said, what we could look at doing, possibly at the end of the month, depending on, you know, the availability of the air resources board and the other agencies, is look at holding some type of town hall meeting at the theater and invite the different agencies down, the supervisor, the air resources board, and the other agencies that are involved in this process. And we could, at that time, you could ask direct questions to these different agencies and give comments and also forward your letters and so forth at that time. And that's something we could look at as well, possibly at the end of the month, as their deadline approaches for cleaning out Pond Number Two. Is that something the council would be interested in?
My only question, do you want me to invite air quality and the regional board to our next meeting then, or do you want me to wait on them?
Well, actually, the sooner the better for the residents here. That might not be a bad idea then. We could have it here if it's in the next two weeks. That way the citizens here can get their questions answered sooner rather than later. So if we could invite the different agencies at our next meeting, and what we could do is clear our agenda of the other items, that way we could have as much time. That way the residents in town here aren't hurried on their questions. That way we could be as thorough as possible. And I'd just ask that we clear our agenda for this.
Would it, it may be necessary to hold the meeting in a different location in case more citizens decide to come out because we're, maybe the theater or-
Would you like us to look at a different location for the next meeting?
Probably, yeah. I think they'll probably be-
Would that be suitable if we held it at a different location? Obviously, we're going to get a good-sized turnout. We're possibly looking at the theater. I would imagine that's where we would have it.
Let me check that.
Okay. Councilmember Reed will check on the availability of the theater. But we will, what we will do is we will schedule it for the next regular meeting and we'll let the public know where exactly it's going to be. It will be, I imagine, in one of three places here, at the LJ Newman Building or at the West Side Theater, one of those three places. It will be a regular seven o'clock meeting and we will clear out the rest of our agenda as much as possible. That way you could, we could be as thorough as possible with the different agencies that are here for your comments. Yes, sir?
Two weeks.
Two weeks. That'll be on the 25th of May, seven o'clock. Are there any other comments, questions? Okay. Are there any other comments or questions from the audience? Okay. I just wanted to remind the citizens at home that we will schedule a meeting, May 25th, regular meeting. It will either be either here, the LJ Newman Building, or the West Side Theater. We will inform the public. And we will have the different agencies involved with the Tataric plant to discuss your questions and comments and concerns over this. And we will have it at seven o'clock. And if there are any questions from the citizens at home, please feel free to contact City Hall at 862-3725. If there are no further comments, I'd like to thank everybody who came here tonight to voice your concerns about this issue. This has been obviously very controversial to our city. And I hope that you will not only come out at our next meeting in two weeks, but also invite your neighbors and contact your neighbors and friends and people in town that you know to come out and let them know that the different agencies will be here. That way they can, let them know what their concerns are. I imagine that the more people that we have there, the more concerned that they'll, the more that they'll realize our concerns. But I would just emphasize to all of you here tonight to contact your friends and your neighbors and let them know that we're having the meeting in two weeks. Okay? Okay. Thank you very much. Item 9B, this is receive and file a report from the Energy Working Group on Electrical Service Providers.
The council recalls in July of 1998, the city council heard a presentation by Turlock Irrigation District requesting that the city consider the possibility of TID providing electrical service on the west side. At that time, we were also approached by Modesto Irrigation District as well as representatives from PG&E who requested that they be part of the process and also in looking at that. At that time, a committee was appointed consisting of the city managers and a council member from the cities of Newman, Gustine, Patterson, and Los Banos, as well as representatives from the Stanllos County Board of Supervisors and Stanllos County Administration. We did also invite representatives from Merced County Board of Supervisors and Administration. Since that time, we have met on several occasions to discuss this issue. I guess the biggest thing that I got out of it was a good education, I think. And I can honestly say now that I still don't fully understand the electrical business. It was an interesting process. I prepared this report. I'm not going to go through it completely tonight, but I will say that early on in the meetings, what we discussed was the real benefit was if the city of Newman could realize the rates that the city of Turlock or the city of Modesto currently realize, which at the current time is about 20 to 30% lower than what we have here. As we got into the process, everyone agreed and said that, yeah, we need to, if that opportunity is truly there, then we need to see if there's a way to take advantage of it, both for business and for residents. The problem is that as we got into the studies and began looking at it further, we discovered that there is a lot going on with deregulation in the electrical business right now. And there are many factors which lead to what the rates actually are right now. And in the future, that's going to change even more. Many of you have probably heard or seen on your bills or are aware of the competition transition charges, or CTCs, which most of those are projected to go away in 2002 or earlier, depending on when certain assets of PG&E get paid off. The problem that we discovered and what we did is we sent proposals to the three utilities and asked them to project, give us what their current rates are, and we compared those. And then we asked them to project what their rates would be in the year 2002. Now, as we did that, it came back in that proposal showing that at that time that the difference would maybe be 5%. And depending on what rate class you were in, in many areas, PG&E actually ended up lower than what the other utilities were. This created a lot of confusion and at times controversy because obviously this brought up the issue of the other utilities and all three actually saying, well, how can you make this assumption? How can you make this assumption? But obviously, to project something that's going to happen in the future, you have to make certain assumptions. What it really came down to, the committee voted in the end to keep the committee intact in order to review and continue to monitor deregulation and things that are going on. But that there was too much uncertainty to say that we could fully support one of the other irrigation districts coming in and basically a proposal to take over the system. And therefore, it was the committee's recommendation that we encourage competition in the community if the opportunities are there, but not take action to support one of the other irrigation districts to actually come in and try and take over the service on the west side. That's basically my report. If the council has any questions that they would like to ask, I'll attempt to answer those. I did notice we also have a representative from PG&E here tonight, Jim Johnson. So if you have any questions that I can answer, hopefully he can.
Well, why don't we go ahead and have, see if the council has any questions? And Jim was gracious enough to come all the way out here. And if, after we have questions, after we answer, after Cleve answers our questions, perhaps you may, if you wish, get up for a couple of minutes, Jim? Are there questions for Cleve, or would you like to hear from Jim first?
Do you have any questions?
Have questions?
No.
Okay, Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. Jim Johnson, PG&E from the Modesto area. I would echo Cleve's comment. It was a real educational process, I think, for all of us. As many of you know, the electric industry throughout California is going through a major change. It was mandated by the state legislator in AB 1890 that the electric industry would be deregulated and that people would be given the choice to purchase their power from any source. Given that PG&E and all the other investor-owned utilities have gone through a major change in the last few months. And we will continue to go through change over the next couple of years. One of the issues that the committee brought up was rates. And I would like to take my hat off to Cleve. He's a very brave person to accept the chairmanship of this committee. And when he said we met on a number of occasions, I think that's a way understatement because we might have met on a number of occasions just to do the rate comparisons and a lot of discussion through that. However, PG&E last month did file with Public Utilities Commission for significant rate reductions. And this is mainly due to the elimination or the future elimination of the CTC charge, as well as folks now and will in the future have a greater opportunity to go out and purchase their power from other entities and transmit it on PG&E's lines to their residences and to their industries and businesses. And I think that it was found that PG&E in the, with the rates that we did file, these are not promises, these are not cast to the wind, these have actually been filed with the commission. They have not yet been approved by the commission as of yet. However, we were very serious in our filings as such. I think your agricultural community is going to be very pleased. And Cleve, we did start today, we are going to have a seminar for the ag community, and I'll give you the date. It's like in the next two or three weeks to start educating on future of the ag. I think the ag community is going to be very pleased and very excited about the rates. I think theirs will be about a 30 to 35% reduction due to the CTC reductions, and it goes from there. So, again, I take my hat off to the committee and to Cleve and to George Lambert from Patterson. They were the ones that stepped forward, or everybody else stepped backwards, I think. And they were left out in the front and they accepted the chairperson and assistant chairperson and had their hands full in controlling all of us, but they did a good job.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions for Jim at this time?
Just one. What, you're talking about the rate reductions, does any of that affect the individual residents?
Yes, yes. I was just using agriculture as an example, but from the residential all the way down. Now, the residential is, has already received a 10% and are scheduled to receive another 10% and another 10%. And so out of AB 1890 legislation, that's how they chose to get their rate reductions, whereas the industrial, commercial, and agricultural chose to get theirs at the end of the transition period.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. The question was, from Miss Cross, was if it was PG&E? And the answer was, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Cleve? No? I just want to thank Councilmember Martina and Cleve for continuing to serve on this committee representing the city council. This was not an action item, just a report. Item number 9C, this is appoint two members to serve on the joint city school committee. Cleve?
As council recalls, at the joint meeting on April 29th, the council and the district agreed and suggested that a committee be set up to review various items. Some of those were briefly discussed at the meeting, but it was suggested that we have a committee of probably two council members, two school board members, and then staff members to review different issues that come up. One of them obviously is the issue of a possible school bond coming up this November, as well as other issues that we needed, a possible joint ventures that we might, can work on together in terms of maintenance, facilities, and et cetera, that can be of benefit to both us and the school. So this item is being brought back to you now at your request to consider appointing two members that would be interested in serving on the committee. There's no specific time. I'm assuming that this committee will meet as needed, not on a regular basis.
Thank you. Any questions for Cleve? No? Let me just say, right now, we currently meet, myself and the superintendent and the city manager, and Joan Vargas has met already. So I would like to continue to serve on this because it seems to me that we're already going through some of the issues that we're talking about. But if there are no objections to my serving, I would be glad to. And I would ask that we appoint someone else as well to the, to this joint committee?
I'd be willing to volunteer.
Okay.
I was very excited about the joint meeting that we had. I think it was productive. It opened a lot of doors and there's a lot of potential out there for joint projects between the city and school district.
Okay. If there are no objections to Councilmember Radford and myself serving on this committee, can we go ahead and give some direction? Okay. I guess by consensus, by consensus. Okay. I again want to, as Councilmember Radford had said, I again want to emphasize my thanks to the school board for meeting with the city council on our joint meeting a couple of weeks ago. It went very well. There are certainly some issues that we can work together on. We've got a bond measure coming up in November on the ballot to build a new school. And we hope to have the citizens out and in force to help in that effort. And you will hear about that in the weeks and months to come. But I want to, again, thank the school board. With that, I will move to item 9D. Yes, ma'am?
In other communities, they have money in the allowance towards the schools.
You know what? I'm going to have to ask Mrs. Cross, can you go ahead and get up there? That way the citizens at home can go ahead and get your comments.
I'm just saying that in other communities where I have lived, the developers always contributed to the schools. And so much per house, they were required to do that. Are we doing this?
Yes, ma'am. Under the last passage of Proposition 1A, which passed on the November ballot of last year, basically it was a bill, Senate Bill 50, which provided, I believe it was nine point some billion dollars worth of school bonds. In exchange for that, though, they capped the school fees to, I believe, a dollar ninety-three a square foot. One of the, and that's what we could charge, or what the schools can charge per square foot now because of the passage of this bond. One of the things that the school board, however, is looking at, there's a provision in this bond that speaks to hardship cases. In that case, a school-
In that case, a school district could apply for an additional fifty percent of the fee on top of that, if the state deems them to be a hardship case, and that's one of the things that they're reviewing. But with the passage of that bond measure last November, that's how it was addressed. Their feeling was that they were going to have these billions of dollars available for school construction, but they also put a cap on the school fees.
Well, when I say developers, I mean home developers.
Yes, that's what.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Okay. Item nine D, this is a resolution authorizing city manager to enter an agreement with the computer company for the purchase of HP personal computers for the MOM financial package and authorize the expenditure to occur during the ninety-eight, ninety-nine fiscal year. Margaret?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. This is part three of the three-part saga that we've been working on for the past year. Finance has been looking into what's going to be needed to become Y-two-K compliant for January first, year two thousand. Also, our entire system has been, is becoming rather obsolete. We acquired a mainframe in nineteen ninety-one, and the last personal computer that was purchased by the finance department was in early nineteen ninety-four. So, it's time to look at this for many reasons, and that we have done. First, we've acquired the software package. We did that in February. That is the MOM operating system, which we've been using very successfully since nineteen ninety-one. The mainframe, which now will also serve as a, the server, is the IBM RIS six thousand. That's been ordered. And the final component will be getting personal computers to serve as the terminals for the mainframe and also serve the needs of the finance department as we needed to do spreadsheets and other things that you do on the personal computers. The element that's a little bit different now, that all of a sudden, this is becoming necessary to expedite, we want to make sure that our general ledger falls in place July first, our fiscal year does transcend into over two thousand. There might be some, a few of the functions that might have a little bit of difficulty recognizing the zero-zero in the general ledger and listing process. Nothing major, but it will cause irritation. And since we've got to change this anyway, we were fortunate to get scheduled into June fourteenth to have the entire system installed. IBM will be sending the mainframe directly to Corbett-Willets, who is our software provider. They will migrate the files and get it set up at their office. Then on the nineteenth, Corbett-Willets, along with the computer company out of San Francisco, will come in to City Hall. We will plug in the new system and get everybody connected, and by Monday, the twenty-first, everything should be up and running. That only time will tell, but that's our hope, that we can get this done now and then July first. Any problems with the general ledger portion, which is the only thing that might have been a problem that early in the process, will not be. So, council asks, the staff asks the council review the proposal and so we can get this task completed.
Are there any questions for Margaret?
Margaret, what would happen if the system wouldn't go online?
Our, well...
Do you have a backup?
The backup?
Would be the old system?
Till December thirty-first.
You never know. I mean, there's no guarantee. The Tarratt plant said they were going to have it cleaned up right away. There's no way.
I can assure you that it will be working by Janu-, December thirty-first.
I'll remember that.
I mean, it might be things out of our control likely.
We have you on tape. We have you on tape, Margaret.
I'll remember that.
It will not be, the financial system, problems may arise that we're not, haven't even thought of, but it won't be this.
Okay. Are there any? Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Just in case. I'm sure nothing will go wrong, but just in case, do we have any workarounds planned or, you know, any contingency planned, or, you know, if we have to do things?
We can do things manually. All our books are balanced by hand. I like to have that control. Utility bills are mailed December thirty-first. They'll be mailed out maybe a day or two early. Payroll for December thirty-first will be done like December twenty-fifth. Year-end reports will be updated. Business licenses have already, will have already gone out, so that'll be done. On January first falls on a Saturday, so we'll have two full holidays for the city hall people, for everybody else to get themselves in order. And in case there is no power or no water, or some of those unheard-of things happening, we can operate very well for two weeks without any power. We can accept payments. We can walk deposits to the bank. We can reconcile bank deposits like we have in the past by hand. The cash, that's with our fiscal agents, because of the bonds, the five bonds that we hold, can also be tracked by hand, and right now, we're doing it on a spreadsheet. So, we just have to carry those. Our investments are rather limited because of council's direction to be quite conservative in how we invest our money. It's only in two or three different places. Again, that's tracked by hand. We'll be sure we have enough cash and also enough money in the checking account to handle any unforeseen problems in case. Most of our cash is with LACE in Sacramento, the local agency investment fund. We can have enough cash brought down to carry us over for a month to be sure that we can operate, but it's not a problem, because all the utility payments that are coming in can be deposited. Checks can be written by hand. Payroll will not need to be done till January fifteenth, and for our twenty-nine employees, we can write the checks by hand. We have manual typewriters, and we have battery-operated calculators. So, at least for a few weeks. We might be cold, we might be hungry, it might be dark, but we will survive.
Thank you, Margaret. Your usual thorough job. That's great.
Margaret, as you would say, not to worry.
Okay. If there are no other questions, are there any other questions for Margaret? Okay. Can we have some direction on this item, please?
I saw a move for approval of Resolution number ninety-nine, next number, a resolution authorizing Cleve Morris to enter to an agreement with the computer company for the purchase of HP personal computers for the MOM financial package and authorize the expenditures to occur during the nineteen ninety-eight, ninety-nine fiscal year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor state by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Item nine E, this approval of warrant one six eight two seven of PG&E.
Do I make a motion that we approve the warrant for PG&E?
Second.
May we have a roll call on this item, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes four to zero with one non-participating. Item, item ten, these are items from the city manager. Cleve? Short and sweet. The Streetscape Committee is continuing. We've got our second meeting scheduled, actually tomorrow night, so that will continue to go on. I think that's all I have to report at this time. Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Martina?
I have nothing tonight, Mayor.
Councilmember Altamula?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Radford?
I just wanted to note, and you may have been going to cover it, Mr. Mayor, but the business community meeting that'll be held on the nineteenth, from six to eight in the library, recommendations regarding city sign codes and outdoor displays. So, those of you that are interested may want to attend that meeting, Mr. Mar, the nineteenth, six to eight in the Newman Library. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Reed?
Nothing at this time. I just have one item, and I actually, I, it had to do with our warrants. There was one, actually, that I didn't pull, but I just have a quick comment on it, and maybe the council couldn't ask the staff to bring this back. I'd noticed a warrant in here for, to install a wall and steel door at the police department for a little over two thousand dollars. One of the concerns that I had is that, and this is something we've talked about for years, is actually putting together a game plan. You know, I, I had a chance to go through the police department again the other day, and, you know, I got to tell you, I feel bad for these guys. They, you know, it's just a big humongous mess in there. There isn't, as far as the configuration, not the, I apologize. Just the, I'm sorry, Bob. The configuration of it, we just, I think at some point, you know, one of the things that we've talked about is utilizing this fire bay. And if I'm not mistaken, and Bob could correct me if I'm wrong on this, is one of the things that we've talked about for meetings that we're having in the next two weeks, is one of the things we've talked about is going to City Hall, expanding it maybe that way. Well, I had a chance to go in there with the chief and with our city engineer and measure it out, and this building here, in here, is about nine hundred square feet. And you go in the fire bay, and you measure it this way, and it actually measures the same width, but it actually goes quite a bit longer, and it, that's about, what was it, about a little over fifteen hundred square feet going this way. And what I'd like to see us do and bring back to look at, perhaps budgeting, is how we can best utilize this entire space. And I know this building here, for example, connects right to the police department. If there's some way that we could configure this a little bit better, well, a lot better than it is now, and bring that back and ask that we budget that, include that in our budget this year, that way, the police department can make a little bit more, can make a lot better use of the space that they currently have right now, because this is just a maze that just, you know, leads to nowhere if you have a chance to go through it. But if the council would concur to that, that we have somebody come in, professional come in, and look at the layout of it and how we can maximize the use on this building once and for all, and stop piecemealing it and get it done right? Couldn't, okay. And we could bring something back on that, please?
Carl Doni, a question I'd have. Is there some chance in the future that the police department could be moving to another location?
That's something we could look at. We could...
I know that has been thrown around for a number of years.
Right. Well, obviously, that would be the best situation, is to, one of the places that I've, well, I've, there's a, I've had some thoughts as far as a good location for them. But we, I'd like to maybe ta, I'd like to, I just don't want to go into where the, you know, where the property is at this point. I just, for starters, if we could just bring something back here. I just, I just think it's important, you know, for all the residents here who may not know, is, you know, for years, we've, in the, in the past back here where it's gated, for years and years, we had a situation back there where there was no gate, where the police cars were unprotected, where you would have citizens, you know, there was a number of incidents where, you know, police vehicles, where windows were broken, where people could walk right up to the door, and, and there wasn't the safety for our police department that we really needed to. And I think it's important that, you know, that we need to make sure that we have the resources available, and that's, that's why I bring it to the council, to make sure that we, that we have the resources available for all of our departments, because as we try to provide quality services for everybody, we need to make sure that, that we have the necessary resources for our staff to do their job. But this will come back, and that's all I have tonight. And if there are no other questions from the public, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor state by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Meeting adjourned.